Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting on Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is five thirty-nine P M. And I will do a roll call from my far left, council member Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Strother?
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Liggins?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Barber?
Here.
Okay, everybody, all six present in the county court. If you would all please stand and join us for the pleading.
Hi, cleverly, just here at the time. In the state of America and to be the republic for what we declare as well management and our God, to be the principal with whatever to each other for all.
Thank you. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skalach Band of the Pialp-Triol Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest-standing historic villages of their people, the original inhabitants of Gig Harbor area. Um, council, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sorry. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Like motion passes, six to zero. Thank you, council. Um, we've got the new presentations this evening, so we'll go right into the mayor's report. I just, um, I wanted to wish everyone a happy new year. Thank you all for being here. City Attorney Daniel Kenny, uh, Public Works Director Jeff Langham, Community Health and Director Carl Seaman is here, Finance Director Dave Rodenbach is here, Chief Kelly Gussi, who is there? There is, he's here. Oh, he's here. Very important, very important. Welcome to our, and our Community Resources Director Shannon Pastanthe is also there, City Administrator Katrina Kinsen, and City Clerk Josh Sticker. Thank you all for being here, staff and local members of the public, online as well as here in the audience. Um, so happy new year to everyone, and I wanted to, uh, let you all know we have an ungroundbreaking ceremony, our second one, for phase three of the North Creek St., North Creek Slum inherited site at ten A M. this Saturday morning at Donkey Creek Park. And we're doing the, um, very brief speeches and acknowledgement in the park. And then we'll, for those that want to, we'll be taking a trip, unless the weather is just absolutely horrible like it was this afternoon, we'll be taking a trip over into the property so that people can go and walk that and have a, have a guided tour, um, as far back into the property as you want to go. It's about five acres. Um, so come ready with your umbrellas, raincoats, boots, whatever. I think, I think that's what it's calling for on Saturday so far, but we'll hope for Sunday. Um, and then tomorrow we have, if, if you already are feeling our council vacancy up here, we missed council member Denson already. But, um, tomorrow at one o'clock here in council chambers, we are going to be having a, um, our interviews for the next council person that will take Robin's place, um, through the end of December of this year. And so, um, that will be at one o'clock. It is open to the public. And we have four hours slated. I don't know that we will need that. We have seven applicants, so, um, but if you'd like to attend, that is here in council chambers. And Josh, will that, will that be hybrid or just in just in Berlin?
That's also hybrid.
Okay, so that'll be hybrid if you want to watch online as well. So that is it for my mayor's report, and I will turn it over to us, the administrator for, for.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Great to see you this evening. Couple of quick items. I would just like to, um, acknowledge our public works operations crew and our police officers in part of the complex staff who were lifesaving means during our extorsment in Harbor, making sure that people could get around, um, safely. And also that they showed up to work, um, when other, others of us did not, and then as a system employee, so a big round of applause essentially to, um, Public Works Operations Crew, that you didn't let them know, um, they are fantastic and they are just so dedicated to the city and we're so lucky to have them on our staff. Um, secondly, I want to acknowledge we have a relatively new building inspector, planning examiner, Colin Lewis. Don't know if maybe you've had an opportunity to meet him, but he has recently passed as I R C Inspector and I R C Plan Examiner, um, certification, which is great for, uh, two pretty large companies. So I wanted to pass on those kudos, uh, to Colin and let you know that as well. Thirdly, today is the first day of a legislative session that is one hundred and five days long. There are laws and bills that are being turned in regarding our priorities, including helping, um, some, uh, policing, um, builds. And we are continuing to, we will be continuing to track those. There will be some that we will, um, maybe seek input from the council. Uh, but as those bills do come in, we're tracking them against council's legislative priorities. And we will be submitting to Josh and Andy Power of August and the post, of course, for a regional revision. And on some of them, depending on what the bill is and how strong the bill is on legislative agenda, make ourselves accountable and ask for issue, uh, assessment by anybody. So maybe you touch more often in the next hundred and five days, but we do feel it's important on, on certain areas, very importantly, to the council that we have the other ways when we get and that we did have to get opportunities to, to be there and follow. And lastly, it's a bit of fun. I know that council is not, are not, um, staff per se, but we have initiated over the last six months acknowledgement of, um, all of our staff and their annual anniversaries. And, um, it lacks for larger anniversaries. And so today, we would like to acknowledge all of you. Um, council member Roger Henderson for one year of the city. Um, council member Mary Harper for one year. Let's see, council member Randy Leggins for one year. Council member Lee Rodenber for three of it. Council member Seth Swartit for one year. And then council member Tony Wilson for five years. And then the last, but not least, our mayor is Marcy for her first year there. Um, staff, we appreciate all of your cooperation with us and support in city services. We were happy to acknowledge all of your, um, work for our race base team. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So appreciative of our, of our council and their supportive staff for, for sure. And staff support of the council. It's a two, it's a two-way road, and I think we're traveling it really well right now, so very much appreciate that. Um, I will now open up a public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, if there's any, keep anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an agenda or an item that is not on the agenda, um, you can come forward at this time and state your name and address for the record, and you'd have three minutes to give your comment. Okay, seeing none, um, is there anyone in our online audience that was just to speak on a non-agenda item? And you can press either the brace hand button at the bottom of your screen or star nine on your phone if you're calling. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we will close the public comment on non-agenda items and go into new business item one, which is our professional services contract amendment number two for the scanning net shed repair and maintenance. Um, the suggested motion is to operate the mayor to execute amendment number two to the professional services contract with Helix design group for preparation of specifications and drawings, including steel, to stabilize the net shed in an amount not exceed thirty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars. And this report comes to us from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Mayor, good evening, council. Um, the amendment that you have for you tonight for this professional services contract, uh, is for some designing, additional design developments you have completed for the scanning net shed rehabilitation. Uh, this contract would direct Helix to amend the structural analysis and, uh, the design that was initially prepared that would be used in steel instead of wood. Um, the scanning net shed, we've been talking about this, it's pretty impressive, they're supportive of the change in the structural numbers to be steel. Um, and we also followed up and had conversation with Department of Artology for preservation now, uh, the ones that are in charge of short trajectory like this and changes that might take place while the city's own, uh, new work. And, uh, yeah, also, uh, it's important to change wood to steel. So if this contract is approved at night's meeting, we will work with consultant to make the necessary changes to the structural design and then present this to the designer review board for their review, uh, consideration, uh, from the city's department. For, uh, search. So, uh, that's what I reported after the interview.
Uh, council member Henderson, thank you.
Um, Director Langham, thanks. I have a question for you real quick. Um, the switch from wood to steel, I guess, to increase the dead loads, I'm sharing terms of these, but a dead load by thirty percent. Um, I assume that'll probably raise the cost of construction because still we need to work, we need to be done for lateral bracing and maybe even even some question about vertical loads on pipelines.
That is for the check on verticals automatically, more clear, uh, than, uh, and we'll verify that. It is sufficient for, if not, we'll have that conversation. And I'm not sure if it's going to be costing us more because wood, um, you know, it's no sense. There was going to be more wood used than steel by part. So, uh, it was more labor intensive, I believe, to install wood portions. Their sister route, which was by our side, we said, except for one was such an ell bracket, one of, 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 of. You think, thanks.
Any other questions from council? Making sure everyone's lights are working.
We tested them before.
Okay, good. All right, thank you so much, Jeff. Um, I will open up the public comment period for this agenda item only. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this agenda item. Okay, anyone in our online audience wish to speak on this agenda item, again, you can press the raise hand button on your screen or star nine. Okay, not seeing any, we'll close public comment and we'll open it up for council deliberation and match. Councilmember, oh, wait, we have councilor Denson buttons going on, but actually, let's see, this is throwing me toe down. That was not, that was like a.
You know, move on.
No, it's right. It's okay. It just freaked me out for half a minute. It was like, geez, geez. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and emulate councilor Jensen here. I move to authorize the mayor to execute amendment number two to the professional services contract with Helix Design Group for preparation of specifications and drawings, including steel, to stabilize the net shed in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars.
I'll send them that.
Okay. Seconded by council member Henderson.
Councilmember Denson has turned off.
No. Um, okay, you have a motion and a second. If there's no other comments from council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, motion passes six to one to approve the professional services contract with Helix design.
Six to zero.
Six to zero. They say six to one. I'm sorry. I'm all thrown off by that ghost of council member Denson thing, so. Thank you so much, council, and we'll move on to new business two, Gig Harbor Sports Complex One B, RCO LWCF twenty dash one seven four six D, grant funding agreement amendment. And this suggested motion is to move to operate the mayor to sign a work complex one B LWCF grant funding agreement amendment to include a new W W R P local parks five hundred thousand dollar grant offer. And this report is also from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. In the summer of twenty twenty, uh, the city applied for two RCO grants. Each grant was in an amount of five hundred thousand dollars and was associated with the city's paid one portion of its workforce on the bikes. Uh, these two grants, um, were the land and water conservation fund of the C F and the Washington Wildlife Recreation. Uh, the city was notified after we went through the process of application that we knew that we found the funding limits for the land and water conservation fund, whereas they were accepting our application and, um, uh, awarding it to us. And unfortunately, though, uh, under the W W R P grant, uh, we felt just, um, um, so we did not receive another one of that grant. However, um, as time has passed, um, RCO had recently notified us that they uh, had projects under the W W R P program that never minded construction, and so they had more money available. And so that we moved up to the funding line and are now within the relevant criteria, so we have, um, been awarded our request of the W W R P by the House of Commerce. So this agreement that you have before you said identified through our seal, uh, funding agreement for one million dollar toll for a project including the land and water conservation, abandoned with W R P. That said, what's not included here is also, um, RCO has notified the city that they are trying to move on to increasing the land and water conservation fund grant by an additional one hundred thousand dollars because of time it's taking for them to provide us with the grant in two years, and they recognize that controlling costs have increased. Tentatively, they said they're looking to possibly afford us a hundred or one hundred thousand dollars associated with land and water conservation fund. Uh, and that's not included in the agenda. So I'm saying all this because what I would ask is based on the information in agenda bill, if you would please make the motion to approve the agreement, but then also add to the end of the motion language such as in a future RCO grant associated with the land and water conservation fund, you know, the land and water grants. That way, I don't have to come back to you and have another agreement or then to add one of the thousand.
Thank you, Jeff. Any clarifying questions from council? Councilmember Wood?
Yes, thank you. That's good news. Um, are we under any constraints for construction time?
Uh, we are, uh, it's in the current, I don't, all of the, uh, finally, it's not like.
But not any new because of this hundred thousand that's being considered given to us.
No, no, it, 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 um, slightly may, it's going to be an amendment. It was somewhat of a additional thousand dollars coming forward. And, uh, it would likely follow these steps in the coming, uh, walking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other rights. Um, I will open up public comment for this item. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on that item. Okay, anyone in our online audience that wishes to speak? Okay, not seeing any comments. We'll close the public comment period for this agenda item and I'll open it up for council deliberation and match. Councilmember Liggins?
Yes, um, I'd like to move to authorize the mayor to sign the sports complex one B L C, or excuse me, L W C F grant funding agreement amendment to include a new W W R P local parks five hundred thousand dollar grant offer and any future RCO agreements and W W R P grants. Did I get that language correct?
My suggestion was and any future RCO grant agreement associated with the L W C F and one million dollar grant.
Exactly.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by council member Rothenberg. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, motion passes six to zero. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Um, and then we have a staff report on the official city newspaper from our city clerk, Josh Sticker.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Um, this, this staff report is on the city official newspaper, Gig Harbor municipal code, chapter one point two zero point oh one oh. Um, stipulates that every few years we're supposed to do a review of the city's official newspaper and see if any changes have been made. Uh, two years ago, uh, this January, we made a change to our official newspaper going from the Gateway to the Chikama News Review. Um, both newspapers are part of the same parent company and are fairly interchangeable. Um, the reason we made that change two years ago is because the Chikama News Review publishes daily, which gives us a lot of flexibility, which is really help us out in, uh, their time-sensitive postings that we need to make. Um, and then the Chikama News Review has a quite, uh, broader reach for its print circulation as well. And the way those numbers break down, uh, both two years ago and today, it's about how many people distribution within the city limits of Gig Harbor, how many people receive the gateway and how many folks can distribute. Uh, but then, of course, once you get outside of the city, uh, the members of the news to be involved and they're reaching all, uh, most of Pierce County, we keep an eye on it. Um, so at this time, we're not recommending any change to the official newspaper. It seems to be working well for staff. It's getting the word out there. Um, the online presence is the same, so we haven't noticed any difference in that. Um, and, uh, as far as, we're uncertain, maybe feedback, and maybe about not seeing, leaving notices in the gateway, so. Just to the staff report, I think staff are convinced to just keep going the way I have.
Thank you, Josh. Not seeing any questions from council, so appreciate that very much. Oh, councilor Mayor, I just sent the council one issue.
Any option of adding the, our, really, a hyper local newspaper to Garper now?
They, they do not qualify as a local newspaper. They don't have the print distribution to, to save the permits.
Any other questions? Okay, I will move on to our second staff report, which is also from our city clerk, Josh Sticker, uh, regarding the appointment process for advisory boards.
Thank you again, Mayor. Um, so this staff report is stemming from our last study session on December fifteenth, um, when council asked the question about the advisory board process. So then takes back to the October, or to the August eleventh study session, when we presented the mayor's process for how our board appointments will be done going forward. Uh, that process is attached to your agenda, so if you want to take a look at that again. Um, but it basically summarized the steps that we've been following for the last few months. We have vacancy on, on the buyer to work, um, we put out a notice for that there's a vacancy in the club applications. Once, uh, uh, opening closes, once that announcement closes, then we, my council know everyone applying, we've ordered the application to council, and we ask council for their comments to the mayor before making, um, appointments. And then once those comments are back, and once the mayor's have a chance to review the reapplications and interview people um, as appropriate, then we let council know who the mayor's, uh, selected person who orders. We give council another opportunity to weigh in at that time and provide the mayor with any comments. Uh, those comments will be received and reviewed before we actually let the person who was selecting know that they're pointing, so we have a chance to, um, make revision if needed to. Uh, and then the next step in that process is just to let the person know that they've been appointed and get them on their consentions for council approval. Um, on top of that, I'll see, uh, council, we, last few months, we've been doing a process where we bring in the appointed person for, uh, introduction to council at a study session. This is a report that, uh, probably, so it's, uh, subject for them to need counsel before that. Um, this process was recently put in council, uh, guidelines as an official step, and the way that's written is, uh, and council, as all in slash sheet for, by, by our council, our candidates will be introduced to council at a space. Um, so really, that's the only step in the process that's kind of council's, uh, council's discretion to change. Um, that our study sessions on December fifteenth, uh, we heard from a couple of council members that they, um, they have concerns about how that process was happening and what actions they've taken and what options were available to council. Um, so really, that, that's kind of where that is, is it's really up to council if they want to continue that on those interviews in the study session or if they prefer just to have the appointments go straight to, uh, confirmation of, on the consent agenda. So, uh, I'm happy to answer the clarifying questions or, um, if there's anything that I didn't cover there, please, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Liggins?
Yeah, um, thank you, Josh. Uh, or sorry, thank you, city clerk, Sticker. Um, do, are you looking for direction whether we continue that process?
Uh, that's council's discretion. Um, it's in council guidelines, so we typically provide that by resolution, but council guidelines are basically at the discretion of council. We follow those. So if something in your guidelines doesn't work for you, you can just simply direct staff to do something different. So if that's your intention tonight, you can do that, even, uh, just by, you can make a motion and let's to direct staff that you don't want to do this type of action anymore, or if you want to keep doing that process, then you can just continue doing it, so. The timing of when that happens is at council's discretion.
I'm, I'm curious to hear from other council members what their thoughts are on this. Um, the, I enjoy the introductions. I don't know if the questions are needed. Um, I know in the last study session, there were several questions, almost, um, partaking into an interview, which I imagine can be, um, a bit intense for a person, uh, on that public meeting forum, so I'm curious what others think.
Councilmember Barber? Yes, um, I would like to suggest that we do not have the introductions any longer. I believe that since we're given the applications and we have the opportunity to review those and provide any questions to the mayor, and then we also have another opportunity to reach out to the candidate, which we like to each other candidate. I think that we have plenty of opportunities to be able to meet these individuals who are volunteering their time to serve on an advisory board. I think that it's really important you remember that they are volunteering for us and not to put them through the process that just seems very, very awkward the way we've done it right there. Uh, thank you, councilmember Strother.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, just like to agree with councilmember Barber's comments. Um, while it would be a great opportunity to meet them and meet the, the council as a whole, I think there's other opportunities for that, um, and to thank them for their time, so I'm good with these changes to our guidelines. Thanks, Josh.
Councilmember Rothenberg?
Maybe they would like to meet us. Maybe their, you know, introductions are generally two, two-way. So it's an opportunity for them to meet each one of us, council people, and at the same time, I don't necessarily think the questions are necessary, uh, if we just use good manners and don't try to intimidate or ask a question, makes the, uh, nominated or chosen person uh, feel like they are intimidated. Uh, but on the other hand, I think that if you're trying to get a job or trying to, uh, gain a position, uh, I think you ought to be ready to answer questions. So I, I think introductions should still be there, so they can meet us.
Thank you, councilmember Wood.
Uh, yes, thank you. Sorry.
So the questions that are asked to the applicants are those the questions that have come from?
If you're asking yourself what the question, the questions that are, I'm discussing, are the questions that come up during the introduction. Uh, so there is no formal question that's, and they're all opened up for council members to ask questions if they have any. Uh, but there's no prescribed questions without introduction.
So on their application form, did the council ever have an opportunity to, uh, listen to the, to listen to the questions that are being answered, asked by anyone?
Those are on the application forms, so they're just taken. There's no audio recording.
Okay. I, I have major concerns of confirming anyone that I don't get to talk to, and I don't, I don't know how you confirm people without talking to them and asking a question, so, uh, I'm very much in favor of keeping the study session. I, I'm also reminded that before we had the study session, and we had smaller groups of three, I think. I, I, I appreciate and I honor that council did not want to. I, I, I appreciate and I honor that council did not want to have that. But when that did happen, we had a plethora of people who wanted to volunteer, and all of our volunteers were so qualified and so interested that if they were not chosen that time, they came back and they re-volunteered again and hopefully to get on board. I think, I think former councilmember Denson said she had to be, that she was interviewed two or three times, I think, before she got on part of them. So anyway, I'm very much in favor of keeping maybe study session, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Higgins?
Yes, thank you, I just wanted to clarify, Josh, that if I'm remembering correctly, at the study session, when, the way it was done before with the three council members, that was outside of the state RCWs on what is legally recommended for appointments to boards and commissions, and that it should be done by the mayor, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, we stopped doing those meetings because they were not consistent with state law.
Okay, and it's, the questioning is done by the mayor, and then we have an introduction process after. I'm fine with keeping it the way that we have it. I do think that we need to be respectful, I personally received some feedback of some people that thought some of our questions at the study session were of a personal nature and that they were uncomfortable by some of the questions asked of the candidate. And so I just think, like what everybody has said, you know, and I'll follow along with it, but if we're respectful, like councilmember Rodenberg said, and just get to know the people, and if we have concerns to reach out, you know, individually or through the mayor, I'm fine with that, so.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Henderson?
Thank you mayor, yeah, I agree with that as well, as long as it's kept as an introduction and not an interview. I'm fine with that, I just don't want it to turn into an interview because they've already gone through the process, the process that we've agreed to. And again, we all have the option of asking questions earlier on if we have friends or that would, so I'd like to keep it as an introduction, friendly introduction, otherwise we may end up losing volunteers if we feel like they're any good growth, that's my opinion, good.
Thank you, councilmember Wood?
Yes, you mentioned that there is an opportunity to ask questions or interview, when, when would that be?
What I was, are you talking in response to what I had said?
Well, I think, I, I think I can't speak to the council members, I have to ask question only of the mayor, right? I mean, I was really responding to what councilmember Henderson said, but I don't think I can ask some question, am I not supposed to do the thing for the mayor, or is that how this works?
I think, I think you're referring to your opportunities to ask questions of the candidates. You're welcome to reach out to them individually if you have individual questions, but those would not be done in an open meeting. They're only part of your confirmation process if you want to be that way.
So, so someone could ask the question of the candidate, is that what you're saying?
What we're hearing from council right now, not to, what words anyone's not, is that whatever it is that they like with the format of the introduction where council members are not asking questions of the candidates during the meeting.
How do you confirm somebody without talking to them?
Well, I think what you have the option to call the candidate and ask them questions yourself.
Oh, that's good.
Outside of the public meeting, to get any additional information that you, that you want.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming that is correct, I don't, I'm not seeing any head shaking from legal or from the administrator. I would encourage you to be respectful in those conversations, of course, I mean, as we all would. Because you're right, there are less people volunteering these days than there were before, and there's probably many reasons for that, but they are coming to volunteer and serve, and so I would just ask that we, you know, when you do call them individually, that you're kind and respectful in your questions and but then, but be able to get the information that you need so that you have that comfort level when you do go to appoint somebody or confirm somebody, then you feel confident doing that.
Thank you very much, that, that suits me pretty well.
Sure, absolutely, councilmember Higgins?
Yes, thank you mayor. So if we also see the application and we review them, and we, there's a specific question we would like asked, we can give you that question and you can ask that in the interview as well.
Yes, absolutely. And then if there's a, if there's a question that keeps coming up, that seems to come up over and over and over again for a particular commission or a particular or for all commissions, we can add that to the application that they fill out online. Kind of like we had, we asked for suggestions from council to have that application be a little bit more in-depth and have questions added to the application, we can do that as well. So if there's a question that we see that keeps coming up, we can certainly add that to the written application, and that way all seven of you will see the answer to a question that maybe all of you are wanting to keep asking, so we would have that sent to everybody, or then everyone can see the answer to that question.
Councilmember Rodenberg?
Thank you.
Yes, so assuming that it sounds like we're going to keep the introduction, I would suggest that we make sure that the candidate who is introducing themselves to us knows that they should be giving three minutes, you know, my name is so-and-so, and this is what I want to do, and maybe we should also have some sort of introduction. As councilmember Rodenberg mentioned, it's for them to meet us as well, so maybe there's a two-sentence thing that each of us also says. So it does literally become an intro, a mutual introduction. I like that idea, I think, you know, just saying who you are, how long you've been on the council, maybe why you decided to get into public service, you know, do something like that, I think that's great, I think. Any other questions? What? Oh, is your light not working again? Oh gosh. Do you want something you want to like? They all.
I think Lee's got the on off switch.
What if I'm just playing? Yeah, my. So what's happening now, is that, am I still on again?
Do you want to talk?
No, I don't. I just feel like I'm wrong, I'm just here working on my.
I'm telling you, I'm going to text her up in this meeting, hey, let's go. Okay, so I think we have direction to keep the introduction process going in study sessions, but more of an introduction, a two-way introduction versus an interview. And then council is welcome to contact applicants and ask them additional questions that they want verification on or anything like that, and then I think that's, I think that's, and then if there's any additional questions that council wants to add to an application, we can talk about those and add those to applications as well. Councilmember Higgins?
Thank you mayor, just a quick comment, then if we are going through an hour for members to reach out to the applicants, I think they should be notified that you may get a phone call.
Yes, we'll add that. So they're not surprised if someone will be calling, yeah, we will, we will notify the applicants of that as well, that they may receive a call from a council person with additional questions. So we can let them know that. Maybe we can put that in a little blurb at the top of the application or something.
Yes, we really appreciate council's feedback tonight, and we will be putting together some initial information to let the candidate know what to expect and then how to be prepared for their introduction.
Yeah, great, okay, thank you all for your feedback on that, that's great. I will open it up for council reports and order comments. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, thank you. Today is National Law Enforcement Day. So what you hear from our Gig Harbor officers on a regular basis is the bad guys are not welcome in Gig Harbor. Gig Harbor is their town, our officer's town, this is the kind of thinking that our law enforcement says, and I've heard them say, bad guys are just not welcome in their town of Gig Harbor, and they do their best to keep us safe. So thank you to our law enforcement officers who keep us safe every day. I want to take this time to also thank our law enforcement family members. These last years have been rough on keeping the bad guys out of Gig Harbor and crime abey and have created more crime in our community. This lack of regulations has put our law enforcement officers in greater jeopardy. Our law enforcement officers are sons and brothers and husbands and dads, I don't think we have any women, unfortunately. And sisters and daughters and moms. So, so I have been on ride-alongs with our officers and I've attended our citizens' police academy for the life of me. I cannot imagine sending someone that I love off to work daily and never quite knowing if they're going to come back at the end of their shift and how they will be. To these families, thank you for sharing your loved ones with us. Thank you for your love and support and patience with your loved ones and with the city and with the citizens of Gig Harbor. Sometimes our officers need a little reminder of the importance of picking up socks and et cetera. Thank you to family members for keeping it real and keeping it normal as best they can with their loved ones. Gig Harbor citizens who do know these family members are few, but I know all of our citizens hold you in our hearts to the officers and their families. And we pray for your family nightly. So to our officers, thank you, to our, to their families, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I'm tired of talking a bit. Councilmember Rodenberg?
Yes, thank you. Earlier this evening, it was mentioned that we're doing an underground briefing at the North Creek property this weekend, and I would like to publicly thank the Piala Tribe for their fifty thousand dollar matching donation for that project. It is really important, and we are all grateful to their support for this important project that helps to preserve our urban forest and also the salmon habitat, so kudos to the Piala Tribe. Thank you, yes, we will have guests from the tribe there on Saturday that you can come and meet and hear from, and other special guests as well, so. Come on out for, for that event at ten o'clock, I'm sorry. Okay, I don't see any other lights on except for councilor Barber's light is still on, but. And now sort of coming, coming meetings is a touch to the agenda. They are messing with me up here with your lights. Not fair, so you can see those on our agenda, and with that, if there is nothing else for the good of the order, or any more mystery lights from councilmember Denson's ghost, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, it sounds like everyone's adjourned at the same time, so meeting adjourn, thank you everybody.